Hi, Jason.
Good evening.
Hi, Brad.
Oh, hi, Grant. Hi, Jason.
Debbie still got her microphone off. Hi, stranger.
Hey, Jessica.
I am back.
Hello, aloha from Hawaii.
I always wish I was in Hawaii.
It is pretty nice. I heard you guys are getting a lot of rain, so.
Oh, a lot.
Yeah, I just have pictures because I'm pretty sure the greenhouse that I really like in Ordin is underwater. So, that's not cool.
I think the road down there from Koalak to Ordin is... Actually, Ordin to South Prairie is flooded.
Yeah, I just have pictures. No, it looked fun.
Yeah. Debbie's still turned off.
I am off of mute.
There you go. How you doing?
Good. I had, I'm soaking wet. I just got home. I was like, I don't want to look like a wet room.
I've been taking the dogs out with those triple coats and ice and dry, except when they come in, they're just soap-soaping that just comes right off the floor.
I have to leave for a dinner meeting at like, let's see, what is it, your time? Seven, like 27, 25? So, hopefully it'll be done by then, but otherwise I'm gonna have to leave a little... Or a meeting with my husband's client, so.
Hi, Carrie. There you go.
You know, I was on this meeting at 6:00 PM, guys.
Yeah?
That's Park Commission.
I know. I went back and I was like, seriously, they're on different times.
I remind myself of that, too. I called the week six, and then I'm like, no, 6:30.
We are, we are updating the bylaws tonight, so if the Planning Commission would like to move their meeting back to 6:00 PM, I am totally fine with that. That's the time it was originally at, and it was moved, and we can get to this later, it was moved to 6:30 because of conflicts with the court, which will never happen again. Because we are doing meetings virtually, and then in May-ish, when we move into the new building, well, I don't know if we'll be back in person, but in May, the new building opens up, and once we can go back into person, meetings, they will occur at the new Public Services Building out off of 96.
That is fantastic news.
So I think the only people, the only people we're missing, Grant, is 6:32. We do have a quorum. We're missing Commissioner Sarver and Commissioner Dole. I don't know if, I have not heard anything from them.
I haven't either, but it is 6:32 on Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022. So I'm going to declare the Planning Commission meeting for that date to come to order. Could we have the roll call, please?
Chair Solomon? Vice Chair Strauss Boyd?
Here.
Commissioner Dahl?
Here.
Commissioner Sarver? Commissioner Benyon? Commissioner Holber?
Here.
Mr. Dole? City Scout, I'm Jason Sullivan, Planning and Building Supervisor.
Here.
Debbie McDonald, Planning Commission Clerk, here.
Next meeting is set for April 6, 2022. Gonna have a show of hands of those who can make it. And we have a quorum for that date, so the next time we meet will be April 6, 2022. Hi, Craig.
Craig, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Good evening. Day evening. So 6:33, Debbie, for the record.
Yep.
Commissioner Sarver has joined us. Okay, and probe will embarrass minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I motion.
Up, Jessica.
You can do it.
No, you got it.
Well, one move, the other second.
Okay.
You can choose.
Who made the motion?
Jessica with query seconding.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion, corrections, additions?
I had one, maybe it's just a, just a question. So on staff comments, Jason mentioned a new Associate Planner, Meti Brazel, and I was wondering, is her name Meti, or is that?
Yeah, M-E-T-I-E.
M-E, okay, so it is right. Okay, that was just a question, man.
Any other questions, corrections? All right. All those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Park Commissioner report, and this is where Jason is gonna have to talk with us.
Yep, so Commissioner Hubler has already heard this spiel, so everybody else just hold on for a second. We are, as we are updating our bylaws, we are changing the agendas to add reports from both the Design Commission and Park Commission to report back on the activities, those commissions, to the Planning Commission. We are in the fortunate position of having Planning Commissioner serving on both the Design Commission and Park Commissioner. Commissioner Strauss Boyd is on the Design Commission. She will have probably no report right now because we haven't done anything, but in the future, we're hoping to get the Design Commission not only involved in the review of permits, but also providing input on zoning code updates like we did a couple of years ago, and so that she would be able to provide that report. Commissioner Hubler serves on the Park Commission, and this would be a way of providing, you know, what's happening with the Park Commission, so the Planning Commission's aware. The other commissions will get reports on what the Planning Commission is doing. So the goal is with me serving as kind of a staff liaison to all three commissions, all three commissions having significant overlap kind of in the planning world, one way or the other, I thought this would be a great way of having some good cross affiliation, cross connection, so that the commissions are working in tandem versus seeming like they're on their own little islands. So when you change your bylaws, you will be adding this to our agenda. I'm hoping that most times there will be a report, there might be a no report, like there will be tonight for the Design Commission. I'll take that one tonight, Debbie, so you don't have to worry about it. But for that, I, right now, I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Hubler as the also Parks Commissioner, and she can kind of let you know what the Park Commission talked about just about a week ago, two weeks ago.
Yeah, two weeks ago. So Parks Commission, we are working on a essay contest for Midtown Park. Midtown Park is a placeholder name. And so we had talked, starting mid last year, about bringing out a essay contest for the, at first, it started out to be just students within our city zip code, within the 98391 zip code, and then it expanded into the whole community gets to now participate. And we do have criteria, we have, actually, as Meti was amazing in pulling all this together, she has put a all kinds of little, you know, number systems and things like that, so we, the Parks Commission and a few of our dude, what are they called? Our history, our history, Bonnie Lake Historical Society members, and then a couple of the city employees will be part of a board where we will then get together and we'll review the applications or the essays that come in, see which ones can proceed through the process and which ones don't qualify for the process. And then the ones that proceed will go on, and then at the end of July is when we will start the actual selection process. We'll have it all narrowed down. And then in August, at the Last Music in the Park, is that right? Wasn't that right, Justin?
Yep, The Last Tunes that Taps.
The Last, yeah. Last Tunes that Tap is when we will announce the winner and what the new name will be for Midtown Park. So our hope is to really bring the community together into that whole process, and then maybe it will expand into other, you know, things out there into the world of Bonnie Lake and, and make our parks cooler. And so, yeah, that's our biggest thing right now. That's what we're really working on. It's just, you know, and I think it just kicked off yesterday.
Yeah, Meti just got the website up and running, and the Seamless Farm is up and running. I will say that no Park Commissioner, City Council member, staff, or their households are eligible to, to participate, and Meti set it up so that when only her and probably I will know who is associated with which essays, everybody will get them assigned with a number. It'll be 1, 2, 3, and so it is going to be as...
Discreet as possible.
Well, not discreet, but based on the contents of the essay versus who wrote the essay.
Yeah.
And then I would say we are also working on the naming for the community garden. That was another big discussion for you guys.
We did. We had a big discussion about that, and that will move forward to the next meeting as well. And we've had a couple people want to rename the community garden. And so we've gotten some letters and people asking, you know, giving us, you know, their input on what to name it. So we've had some discussions about how to name that, or what we should do, or what we shouldn't do, though that will move forward to this next week for further discussion from the Parks Commission, and I do expect more people will be submitting letters of this is what their hope and dreams are for that whole process. So I love that we're getting the community involved in ways like that. So I think it's really fun to start seeing things actually happening.
So I'll take the Design Commission, so I'm not gonna put Commissioner Strauss Boyd on the spot tonight. It makes up for all the IOUs I owe her from college. Side story, Debbie and I went to planning school together about 15 years ago, so we were in class together and lots of debates between us, but, so Design Commission will be meeting on April, in April, on April 13th, so mark your calendar, Debbie. We will be getting with Debbie McDonald here to send out a meeting to all the planning commissioners, I mean, park design commissioners, to let them know that we will have a meeting. We do have stuff for the agenda. We know we have at least one project, maybe two. It's not a fun one. It's a mini storage facility, but it's supposed to be the Design Commission. And as I said, we're gonna try to get the Design Commission more involved in some code updates this year, so that's the Design Commission, and that's kind of what we envisioned, I envisioned, by adding these to the agenda, just so that the Planning Commission can ask questions and feel like they understand what the other commissions are doing as it relates to what the, kind of the Planning Commission's main drive is. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Chair Solomon.
Okay. Public comments and concerns? None? Public hearing, none? All continuing business? Which gets us to Planning Commission bylaws, which need to be updated, and will have the Design Commission and Park Board comments added. Jason, do you want to brief us on that?
Yep, we've got a suggested motion on page one, just to move the adoption of the Planning Commission bylaws. I will be working with Debbie to get the bylaws posted on the websites for each of the commissions, so that the public can also see those bylaws. Some of the big changes, other than just kind of grammatical things, is moving the seat of the Planning Commission out to the new Public Services Center. I know it's not built yet, but we are within like 90 days. I didn't want to have to amend this again in 90 days, so we just did it. As I said, moving the meeting to once a month, so that the Park Commission can meet on that third Wednesday. Adding the, those two things to the agenda, and one thing that came up when we did the Park Commission bylaws that I thought was good to replicate here was clarifying that the recording secretary is a staff member. There was some discussion, we all understood that, but the Park Commission was concerned that it could be read that it was a Park Commissioner that did that role, so we just clarified that a staff member, that the secretary will be a city staff member identified by the mayor as designee. Added those two things to the agenda, and it kind of, so we didn't have to try to figure out how to get this thing signed all the time, because we do have record that we've made these things, motions. We simply removed the signature blocks and basically said the bylaws were adopted in 2021 and amended by motion on all the dates to include March 2nd, so that concludes the presentation. I can ask any questions on the bylaws, if you have them.
Well, you brought up moving this meeting to 6 o'clock.
Yes. If, years ago, the Planning Commission meetings used to be 5 o'clock, Grant, I would say maybe seven years ago, six years ago, but what happened is we kept almost every time running into coordination issues with the court, where everybody was shut to the Park Commission, and we'd be sitting in the lobby waiting for a half hour to 45 minutes to get the court business done, get the council chamber reset up, and go again.
As I recall, we went over an hour and a half one time.
Yeah, it was not fun. Moving forward, however, as I said, we are virtual right now. I do not know when that will end, because while the mask mandate ends on March 11th, the emergency proclamation as it relates to the Open Public Meetings Act is still in place, and it says if you have a meeting in person, you have to do it hybrid, which has that staff cost, which is why we've only been doing virtual for the commissions. I don't know when that will end. That is up to Governor Inslee. However, once that does end, the meetings, when they go back to being in person, will be at our new Public Services Center, which doesn't have that conflict. I would suggest not going earlier than 6 o'clock, because people who work and want to participate, 6 o'clock is about the earliest you can go. So if the Parks Commission would like to move their meetings back to 6 o'clock, so all the commission meetings are at 6, I am totally supportive of it. It means I don't have to sit in my office for another half hour. But I would lay that up to the Park Commissioner, and if that's something that the Park Commission wants to do, what I'd recommend is making the main motion to adopt the bylaws. Once the main motion is made, someone make the amendment to change the meeting time to 6:00 PM, and if the maker of the motion and the second are agree, it can just roll up, and we can, we can move that way. So I'll turn it back over to the, to the commission.
So what is the thinking from the commissioners about this? I know we've had commissioners who have been on the road trying to get in for the 6:30 meeting, which moved to 6 o'clock. I kind of suspect that will come again. So any comments on this?
I honestly don't have a preference. Whatever works for everybody else is fine. It just messed me up because Parks Commission's at 6, and then Planning Commission's at 6:30.
But not tonight?
No, just on, they're on, just on Wednesday, so that's why I was like, wait, 6 o'clock? No, this one's 6:30.
All right, what you got?
I have, I would tend to, I could do either one, but I would tend to keep the 6:30 time, if only because, as you mentioned, it's, it's travel problems, especially with traffic getting worse and worse. Giving people time to get there is, I think, important, especially, especially for the commissioners.
Yeah, I, I agree with Craig, too, especially since there's a little amendment in there that I wanted to talk about, where if somebody's 10 minutes late, they'll be counted as an unexcused absence. I, I don't really agree with that one, but yeah, I think 6:30 would be a good time.
And I would say with, on that one, Commissioners Dole, if, if, if someone sent us a text saying, I'm gonna be late, you know, I think the problem was, and I don't think it was this commission as much, but Debbie knows this from being on the Design Commission. Well, I think back, Grant remembers this. Back in the day, we had a couple Planning Commissioners that would show up for like five minutes and leave, and, or be like a half hour to 45 minutes late, and then want to go back and do things over the agenda, so that's why that was put in there. And then Debbie will, has seen this too with the Design Commissioner, where we have them showing up 20 and 30 minutes late. So that's why we have it in there, so that we can kind of keep some control. I will say, I've never seen us really be hardcore about it.
And Jason, the one which says it may be considered an excuse.
Yeah. I was gonna suggest maybe just saying it's at the discretion of the, of the chair.
And I'm fine, I'm fine adding that.
Variably, at the beginning of the next meeting, the chair says, will somebody make a motion to excuse Commissioner so-and-so, and everybody goes, yep, we will do that. So if, you know, somebody really disappears, we can always say, oh, we're not gonna make the motion. I think that solves your problem, Brad.
Yeah, yeah, that does. Thank you.
Yeah, I like the idea of that, just because like if someone consistently doesn't show up, then you have kind of grounds to...
We have grounds, we have grounds to boot them off of the, the commission.
But I, that's how I got on the commission, because my predecessor just never showed up anymore. Craig?
I, I kind of tend to disagree. I think it's an unnecessary stick. I mean, if it handled an issue with old members, that, that was fine, I guess, but I mean, they can be, you can be held unexcused on attendance by the chair at his discretion with a vote of the commission, so I don't really see what purpose that thing serves in the bylaws now.
I think it's a a good thing to know, and that we've agreed to it, and we know the rules. Okay. And, yes, Jessica.
I'm good either way on the 6, 6:30 thing. It, my, I work at the schools, so I'm home by that time anyways, but I do kind of like the idea of consistency, so I don't know if the Parks Commission wants to change theirs, or if we change ours, but I kind of like the idea of if someone, like, wanted to come in to view publicly, and that they would know it's like a consistent time, but like I said, I'm, it, it doesn't affect me either way if it's 6 or 6:30, so if we really want to keep it at 6:30, that's totally fine.
Jason?
We've got two people, I think, like 6:30, and a couple who are kind of, well, we don't know.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
What time does the Design and Arts Commission meet?
Six.
Design is 6. I have no idea about arts. I could, Debbie would know, though.
Yeah, Arts Commission is also 6. Everything is 6, but Planning. That's the only commission that, yeah, that doesn't meet at 6.
So maybe what Jess is saying with the consistency, then if people want to show up to meetings, then that might be the consistency part, if we have that, if others are starting at 6.
And, and I will say City Council starts at 6, so all council meetings start at 6. The only, like I said, the only after-hour meeting that doesn't start at 6 is Planning Commission, and it was because of that one, because of the issue with the court, because the second, the first Monday of the month was really goofy with arraignments, the way the court calendar worked. So that's why it really only affected the Planning Commission. It was really strange. So as I said, if you wanted it for consistency's sake, then I would say go with the 6:00 PM, because then everything is at 6. Either at 6 o'clock on Tuesday night, because both workshops and city councils are 6, or at 6:00 o'clock on Wednesday night for commission meetings. So you do kind of get a standardization across the board.
Yeah, I, I think that consistency would be good.
Consistency. I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to mind read. Could we have a motion?
So Grant, Commissioner Solomon, what I would say is let's make the motion to get the bylaws on the floor for a vote, and once that's seconded and made, then someone can make, or not make, an amendment to move it to 6 o'clock or deal with the 10-minute thing, so, and then we can handle those amendments on that way. So I would, that's what I would recommend right now.
So page one, would somebody make that motion?
Yeah.
Brad?
I've got it. So I move to adopt the amendments to the Planning Commission bylaws.
I second.
Just a second? Any discussion? Yes, Craig?
I would make an amendment to strike the 10-minute late rule as written in the current bylaws.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I would second that.
Okay. Uh, so we've got two motions, but the change from Craig, I think we have to vote on first.
Correct.
So all of those in favor of striking the later arrival in the bylaws in the draft signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and the later arrival is stricken from the draft.
So what we'll do, Chair, is we, we will take out the sentence that starts, "In addition, if a commissioner arrives more than 10 minutes late to a meeting, it may be considered an unexcused absence." We'll just strike that whole sentence.
Now for the main motion of approving the bylaws.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. We, sorry, Grant. I only saw three ayes. Was there a fourth eye? I saw Jessica, Brad, and Craig.
And Debbie.
And Debbie.
And Debbie, okay, thank you. I was missing one. Okay, thank you.
And so, yeah, now there would be, if there is any amendment to make the time change, that would, if that, that would, that would be the time to make that amendment, if that's gonna go forward.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, and make that, too. I'd make a motion that we amend the starting time of the Planning Commission to 6 o'clock on Wednesdays.
I'll second that. Oh, go for it. Go, Craig.
Brad made the motion, and Jessica.
Nope, Craig.
No, that's all right. Don't worry.
I got you, I got you, Chair. It was, it was, the motion was made by Commissioner Dole and then seconded by Craig Sarver.
Okay. You're also polite tonight. So any discussion on that motion? Okay? For the motion to change the meeting time to 6:00 PM, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it's unanimous. The ayes have it. And now we have the vote on the bylaws. Anything to add to the bylaws? We've had two amendments passed, and we've got those changes, and now we have the bylaws. Has been made. Any discussion?
I, I just had one thing. So on, I guess it's item D, it's public testimony, and it says that "After everyone is signed in to speak, the chair shall ask three times if there is anyone wishing to speak this matter." I mean, I think it's good, but who's gonna keep track of that?
That's, that's...
We get in trouble if you don't?
That's, that's Debbie and I, and that's for the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep, we, we keep, we'll, we'll keep track of that. I'm gonna write, I gotta, one thing I gotta do for Grant is get him a little script, but we, we'll keep track of that.
Okay.
Okay.
So call the question on the bylaws. All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand. So call the question on the bylaws. All those in favor say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
One, two, three, we have five, and the motion carries. Gee, Jason, you just lost your half hour waiting. New business. Self-service, sorry, self-storage facilities, page eighteen.
Right, I'm gonna share my screen real quick so you can see the map that we prepared. And then we'll kind of go from there. So we have noticed over the last year, year and a half, there has been a proliferation of people wanting to build mini storage facilities. I've been here for ten years. And in the previous nine, we looked, we had one application. In the last year, we've have, we have up to seven or up to five, five or six that are proposed or submitted or somewhere in the process. Because of that, we wanted to at least raise the question with the Planning Commission about if the Planning Commission would recommend doing anything, and if so, what would that be? As we put in the economic analogy, you know, as we explained, they are only limited in really two zones, which is the C two and the East Town. The two that are shown in the Midtown Core is a little different. That zone doesn't allow for a mini storage facility. One is an existing facility that's been there, I think, since the seventies. And the other one is one that is being done under a development agreement and is vested to Old Code. So that's kind of a unique situation. But the two red and brown areas is where you can either through conditional use permit or outright permitted, build many storage facilities. We did look at the revenue the city brings in from a sales tax basis and also from a property tax basis, not including the property, just the structure. And we, we, the city, on average, it's about five cents per square foot of kind of sales tax, retail tax that comes to the city. They do take up a lot of space. And so we wanted to see if the Design Commission kind of has three options, or the Planning Commission has three options. Option one is to do nothing, just leave the code as it is and allow things to go as they're going. Two, the, the, the Planning, the Planning Commission could move forward with some side of, well, could remove, could move forward with the minimum to just remove them as a permitted use off of the land use matrix, which means anyone that was, had a building permit or was already constructed would be allowed to either finish their project or stay as a nonconforming use. But we wouldn't accept new building permits for new application. Typically, those ordinance have a five day effective date. The Planning Commission could recommend a longer effective date to allow people time if they're kind of in the middle to get their building permits in. This would require a public hearing with the Planning Commission. This would require City Council approval. We're just trying to figure out if there's a, what path the Planning Commission wants to go on. We are going to be speaking with CDC next week about what the council sees. And then the third option, which would be adding additional specific standards to many storage facilities to mitigate some of the impacts. And we don't need to nail those down tonight. It's more of of those three option, which would be the preferred option, and then we could move forward preparing the ordinances. We would talk to CDC before we came back to Planning Commission. So if they divulged, like Planning Commission said, ban them, and City Council said, no added regulations, we would have to have that discussion, but we would at least know where the diverging viewpoints are. So at this point, we're just kind of figure out for the five Planning Commission, or the six Planning Commissioners that we have tonight, what is the preferred approach, preferred approach?
Jason, let me ask you about the development agreement. That's what brought Costco in?
Yes, so twenty, almost fifteen years ago, the city entered into a development agreement with W S U and Warehouser for what used to be referred to as the W S U Forest. It's what kind of created the Costco, Habit Burger, Chick-fil-A area. It also is what gave the city Midtown Park. And then there's about sixty acres that's now owned by Tarragon for residential development, which we're working on on a separate, on a separate track. But that's, that's the development agreement we're referring to. And it's effective until December twenty second of twenty twenty four. And basically, it froze the, the vesting for the zoning regulations in effect as of twenty nineteen, of twenty oh nine.
So I have a question on, I'm trying to wrap my brain around that. So that blue area, that one is zoned multi-commercial? Is that what you said?
Midtown Core.
Midtown Core, okay. So what, so there's that, what is the zoning in that again?
That is the zoning. The zoning is Midtown Core.
Okay, so that allows, right now, it allows a storage facility?
No, the Midtown Core, a couple of years ago, we removed it as a permitted use from Midtown Core.
Okay. I personally don't want to see a storage unit there. I've looked at the, like, the plans there. I've looked at where it's located. It's butted up against Midtown Park.
And there's, as I said, as I told the Chair, Chair Solem, there's nothing we can do about that one. That one is baked into the analysis because of the development agreement.
So that one is for sure going in there?
As long as they want to proceed with the project. But I can't do, I, I have to go back to codes that were in effect fifteen years ago to review that one.
Oh, okay.
So that, so that's what I'm saying, the mini storage, the one that says Premier Storage Number Two, we put it on there because it is an application, and we want to be truthful in our explanations. But nothing we do now will affect that one.
Okay, so, but moving forward, we could zone that so that they wouldn't be able to put another one in?
It's already zoned that way. So on December twenty third, twenty twenty four, the zoning comes in, the new zoning comes back into play, which prohibits many storage facilities in the Midtown Core.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that's what I'm saying, is the blue area is already dealt with, so don't really worry about it. But we had to show them because we like to be truthful. Really, it's the red and brown areas that we're talking about.
Okay.
Now, can we change the zoning now? So we don't get any more?
That
to people file and vest in and build a storage unit in the future?
If you change the zoning code now, and there's not a building permit in, then they would not be able to apply. The only ones that we have building permits in for, so the red ones are already built, they're kind of there. So they would stay until they go away. They wouldn't be able to rebuild, because that's not the way our best, our current besting, our current nonconforming uses code reads. The ones in yellow are in different stages. So the store here expansion has building permits submitted. It's the one that's going to the Design Commission on April thirteenth. Once again, as long as they keep moving forward with the project, nothing we can do, nothing changes with that one, because it's what we call vested. And for people who, I had this discussion with somebody today on the phone. What we mean by vested is they have kind of stopped the meter. So they have come in with a building permit, which means that, the codes that are in effect the day that their building permit came in is the codes that apply to the project until the project's completed. And so that's where store here is. Daffodil has submitted for design review and SEPA. Those aren't vested applications. They could try to get a building permit in, depending on how quick you make the, if you do the prohibition. The other two, Sunset Mini Storage and Celestia One are pre-apps, and we've received no applications yet.
Okay. I, I love the idea of not having any more building that has already here. We just, building our city into a, a storage facility city isn't isn't ideal. I think having more businesses that can bring in people and jobs and stuff like that is what the focus should be more on.
What would you think about permitting it in East Town?
I, I think in East Town even, I think that's where we should be focused on our industrial, industrial.
Yeah, yeah, I, I have to agree with Carrie. I just, I don't think it's the best use of the property for storage facilities. Bonnie Lake is definitely a mecca of retail shopping. And I, you know, we've got, I think we need to encourage more small businesses, you know, in here and, and and I, I think the mini storage things are just, they're, they're not, they don't generate very much revenue for the city at all. And I, I really think we should make a hard recommendation on option two on the, on the suggested options. Prohibit self-storage facilities in all zoning classifications in the city. That's, that's what I think.
So Jason, this is oh, sorry.
I guess you're Mr. Minion, you're on mute.
Sorry, my kid, my son's in the room, so. Sorry, Debbie, did you have a question?
Well, I do, because, you know, so for example, K and M Storage is primarily for RVs. I have my RV trailer parked there. They do have some container type things. But it's, it's predominantly ninety percent RV storage, which is different than a lot of the mini storages, because they don't encourage RVs or, you know, second cars or things of that sort. And Carrie, is there more, you know, part, you know, put your stuff in a garage, lock it up, and that's what you've got there. So i- is there any designation difference between the actual usage? Because when I think of self-storage, I'm thinking more of that, the buildings, garage doors, put it in there, lock it, store my stuff, which usually is less charging per month, but that's a whole nother conversation. But again, can we, can we get a clarity or clarification on when you talk to self-storage, exactly what that means?
It would include the RV storages as well.
Okay.
And I, I think from what I understand, it's going to be a plot of land that is not going to generate much tax revenue. And it's just going to sit there. Be a small storage containers would be at RVs. Yes, Jessica?
I agree with Carrie. I, I would rather have businesses going there that has jobs that like creates more revenue for the city instead of self-storage. But if we, if the council comes back and doesn't want us to ban them, I definitely think some of the regulations, like, I was looking through the other cities that we have for regulations. And like, just like, I was just thinking of the Buckley self-storage where there's a, there's a marijuana shop in it. Like, I would definitely like to limit that happening in Bonnie Lake if we can't outright ban them.
Craig, I'm sorry, you're down at the bottom of my screen.
Yeah, that's fine. Two points. One, I agree with Commissioner Bennett on that subject. But also, I would add that self-storage units have become a significant law enforcement problem. From everything from using them as meth labs, storage for making the chemicals, and also storage for stolen property. And right now, Bonnie Lake has a major problem with theft. My next door neighbor lost the rear half of his boat two days ago. Somebody came into his locked yard and took, it took fifteen minutes and a couple of drivers to get it off. But that's how brazen they are. And I don't, I, I have personally worked on some of those self-storage, and they just I would go with Brad on the option two, at least on those.
So I, I think I'm getting a pretty good
Yeah.
at least consensus. I'm not saying it's universal, so we're not gonna put everybody on the spot. But at least the consensus I'm getting from the Planning Commission as a whole is that the, the Commission would like to move forward with kind of just removing those as a permitted use from the land use matrix.
Yes.
Okay. So when we have that conversation with CDC next week, I will convey that as the consensus of the Planning Commission. And if they move forward, we'll just bring the ordinance back. If we end up into kind of that option three scenario that Commissioner Minion talked about, we would pull in the Design Commission at that time to also kind of provide input on the design standards. So, but if it's just outright ban, we'll just come straight back to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, and Jason, I was gonna say, I feel like there's a hybrid, I'd like to see option three part of that. Though that for the ones that we, that are grandfathered, that are already vested, that we could actually implement, again, supplemental design criteria, since we don't have a choice on those. And of course, it certainly wouldn't impact in the future, because if we go with option two and prohibit, you know, in the zoning classifications, that takes care of it. But it would certainly then allow us a little bit of mitigation with the ones that are, that are vested, so.
Something like putting up a hedge or plantings around it.
And we've, we've required some of the, you know, the different wall textures, trellises, planter areas, things of that sort. So, yeah, it, it's, it's much like the one that's over there on, what is that, one ninety second? You'll notice that right there by the, by the grinder station, there's a little park, little pocket park thing. And that's part of the design requirement for that particular area. So again, that's just, you know, one of the things that they had to do to meet the, the requirement, so.
Any other comments on the issue? Okay. So Jason, you're gonna bring a consensus forward to the CDC.
Got it.
Yep.
All right, Planning Commission future agendas.
I just wanted to give you the, the Planning Commission future agenda, so the Commission can have a, have a game plan of how we're walking through all the things in the work plan. As I say always, these things are subject to change. I don't, I don't have a kind of a crystal ball for the future, but this is our game plan. So you can see that we do have a meeting occurring every month until the end of the year. And kind of what is on those meeting agendas?
Jason, it just struck me. In the bylaws, do we have nine meetings a year or twelve meetings a year?
It's not in the bylaws, it's in the municipal code. And I want to say the municipal code, I could pull it up real quick. I say, I want to say it's ten or twelve. Let me pull it up real quick. So if you have a complex look on my face, it's because I'm trying to read code real quick.
I'll bet my firstborn that it's ten.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Oh, you're gonna lose your first born.
Oh, well, it's about time. Twenty-five years is long enough.
And we will meet the twelve minimum requirement with this.
Okay. All right, thank you for that one. Anything more on the futures? No? Will it go to the order? Correspondence?
None.
DAF comments?
Just want to give you an update on a couple of projects. We, we do have the contract going to the City Council for the consultant work to help us with the SEPA code update. So that should be getting kicked off here pretty quickly. I also have meetings with a consulting firm to get going on to the other items, the twenty twenty two Development Code amendments and the the scope of work for the periodic update. So those contracts should be going to council late March. So we should have kind of the consultant team on, 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 ready to go to start working on those items. So you'll, you'll start hearing less of me having to be every item on the agenda going forward.
Commissioner comments?
Jason, what are we status on code inspectors?
Um, we've got everything going. I believe Ryan signed off on the requisition form that we had to do. I believe that the code enforcement position should get posted internally in a week. Maybe a week and a half, I'm, I'm hoping a week. And then it's got a five day internal posting period, and it goes external from that. Usually two or three weeks. And then, you know, so we're getting to that point of recruiting. We had to get the building inspector done first. That was just a We had to get the building inspector done first. Um, that was just a, I've got one building inspector, and we're getting, building is starting to ramp up significantly. So we took, we prioritized that one. Now we're focused on the code enforcement one. So hopefully, April or May-ish, probably May-ish, May-ish is more realistic.
Okay.
Oh, and one other thing, we do, we, we do have the hearing examiner, RFP, closing on Friday for our new hearing examiner.
Any other Commissioner comments? Motion to adjourn?
No, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? All, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those? Thank you, we're adjourned.
Just in time to get Commissioner Benyon out for dinner. One minute early.
Debbie, I love you, Nick Warmer.